All right, we are getting started. It's five minutes after four. Commissioner Beiner and Commissioner Gibbons are on their way. They'll be here any second. We're going to go ahead and start the presentation. And first on the agenda, we have, I don't have my agenda, but we have it right here next to Mary Jett. We've got Standard Solar. We're going to have a presentation by Mr. Mike Velt, no, Mike Velt, and Mr. Buss. You guys are on. I chewed it up enough. You guys are on. The floor is yours.
Thank you. And I wanted to make sure everyone had met Mike Volby because he's not been at some of our meetings in the past, but I think he's gone around and introduced himself to the staff that's currently here. What we've done is taken our slideshow from last June. We first came in and gave a full presentation of the opportunities. And we've updated it with new information, project information, and our attempts to address the due diligence issues that have been raised over the last several months. So we have, I think, 13 slides.
That's right.
We'll go through them in general. Some of them, we hope you will recognize, but some actually are new information. And Mike and I are going to tag team the information. And Mike represents Sun Edison, who is the financier of the project. And the contract, the PPA agreement, would be between the town of Elkhorn and Sun Edison. But we'll show a diagram that explains all that. So for the agenda, we have the discussion of the opportunity for savings, which have changed a little bit, gotten better, review of what we understand to be the due diligence items and next steps, and especially the timeline issue. So here's the review of the opportunity for savings. Calculated offsettable rate within your accounts that are part of the waterfall chart that has been submitted to DPL, and DPL has accepted the interconnection application and given us all of their information, so they're ready to go. All they're waiting for is a check for about $60,000 to get started, which they would like to receive sooner as opposed to later. The calculated offsettable rate averages out to 11 and 1/2 cents, and the solar rate was 7.5 cents, which creates a net difference of 4 cents times the total production of the system. The 2.2 megawatt system produces just over 3 million kilowatt-hours per year, which translates, based on that original proposal, with 122,240 estimated, of course. As I said before, there's going to be a clear relationship contractually between Sun Edison in the upper left and the city of Elkhorn, and then your friendly bottom of the V, Standard Solar down there balancing everything on top of it, as you can see. Construction agreements and O&amp;M agreements will be between ourselves and Sun Edison. And we, of course, will be discussing issues of system type, size, location, and timing with you, the client, but the actual contract agreement is directly with Sun Edison.
Can we just take a quick pause right here?
Sure.
The power purchase agreement between Sun Edison and city of Elkhorn has been reviewed by Mr. George and Mr. Downs, and we turned red lines, and we've made progress on that. Subsequently, to some of the diligence items, we may have updates to the agreement. But this is a very common type of structure in the solar arena to provide savings without the town needing to put forth the approximately $4 or $5 million of capital outlay to build the project.
Real quickly, are we using a 0, 1, or 2 percent?
Escalator. 2 percent escalator.
We had a 2 percent escalator in that number for the $122,000. Is that correct?
Correct. If you look at historical escalation of the delivered electricity late, right, in the last 15 years in Maryland, it's about 3 percent because the wholesale supply component has done this. But the cost for delivery from Delmarva Power and Light has increased 4 and 1/2 percent year-over-year.
Lou, do you feel comfortable with that?
2 percent?
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you. All right. Design and development progress to date. So the LOI that we had proposed was signed December 3, 2014. The PPA contract started review at the end of December. We had one meeting at the very end of December, and then there have been documents traded back and forth since then. We got approval from DPL to interconnect on January 22. Mike has presented the concept of a zero-risk PPA as of January 28, and we can talk about more about that.
I was going to ask about that. That's good.
References were provided, January 28 as well. It was part of the due diligence. Mike had submitted updated contract language on February 18, and I think, again, or was that the last time that you provided updated language?
The fully package updated contract was provided two weeks after that, in early March.
Right.
One thing to note here, the third item down, approval from Delmarva to interconnect, is really the last fatal flaw in review that was performed to ensure that the power lines can accept the power that's being injected by the system. We often time make progress with folks to get to a certain point, only for that to come back, and the utility says, unfortunately, you have to downsize the system. It wasn't celebrated as a big victory here, but that's a significant milestone that was crossed, and a good thing. If we had the opportunity to move forward, we'd clear that hurdle with Delmarva Power and Light. So thank you for allowing us to do the work in advance of getting the formal approval on the project to ensure that that hurdle has been cleared.
You may remember that was one of those things we brought up back in November, December, and it took about eight weeks to go through the process, but we were successful. And the costs were in line with our original estimates, so it doesn't have any impact on the pricing.
The zero risk.
Do you want to just mention that now, or you want to go to a separate?
I think these were the five diligence items that were called out from meetings in mid to late January, maybe it was February. But the biggest question that was raised was, how do we know that the rate that we're locking into for 20 years is a good decision? Right? That seems to be the crux of the question.
Yes.
Energy markets do this. We've seen what happens with oil. We've seen what happened with shale gas. And the answer previous to that was, when you look at the cost of delivered electricity, you have the underlying wholesale supply market, which is made up of the cost of the power plants and the fuel for the power plants, and then all the delivery. And the fuel cost is probably about 2 or 3 cents in that 11 and 1/2 cents. And the other amount that goes up to it is all of the steel that's in the ground for the power plants, the transmission lines, the distribution lines, everything that costs to deliver it. But we recognize that that's not a fully fulfilling conversation piece despite all the benefits and the savings. And I worked very, very hard with the project finance team to come up with an innovative structure that ensures that, over the 20-year term of the agreement, the very worst that the town will do is zero savings, cumulative zero savings. And if we want to go to the next slide here.
You want to go first?
Yeah.
Well, not only zero savings, but it wouldn't pay more.
Right. It would basically be more utility cost.
We bought it from another source.
That's right.
That's the point I make here.
That's right. So here's a chart. If you'll allow me to jump up here and show you. I got the information that the current rate is not 12.36, but 11 and 1/2. So this orange line represents the hypothetical forward scenario that we're trying to protect against, where utility rates go from 12 cents, 11 and 1/2 cents, down to, let's call it, 6 and 1/2 cents. It's highly unlikely, given all of the steel that's in the ground that's being repaid by the users of the electricity. But let's say that happens, and here's the rate at 7 and 1/2 cents, S believing at 2 percent. And the concern is, well, yeah, I'm signing up for these savings, but I'm not actually making a prudent decision for the town members. Right? That's the concern. So in the time that the offsettable rate is above the solar rate, you're accumulating savings for the town. We forecast year-one savings to be over $120,000, and that's what this right here accumulation shows with this being on this right vertical axis, the accumulation of savings. Once and if, which is highly unlikely, but if a scenario comes up where your delivered electricity rate drops below the solar rate, you would start to reduce the accumulated savings. And if there's ever a period at which your accumulated savings goes to zero because the cost of power is cheaper than the solar, then the solar rate would be adjusted down to match the cost of your delivered power. And that's the updated offer. It's something new. No one in Maryland has ever been offered this before. We're extremely hard and try to put contract language around it that's as simple as possible, but.
We're aware. Authority in terms as far as.
As soon as it hits, as soon as it hits the break-even. Stay that way for 30 days, quarter, six months. Doesn't have to be a break-even for a certain amount of time before our rate is adjusted down.
Yeah, great question. So it's, we define it as cumulative customer savings.
Right.
And the invoice is on a monthly basis. And at the end of the monthly basis, you look at whether this is higher than this. If it is, then it builds up the cumulative savings. If it's lower, then it draws down. That particular month that the cumulative savings goes to zero is the same month that the solar rate would be adjusted down to match the delivered electricity rate.
So all of our savings, we build up savings for three years. The rate goes below, we would have to use up all of our savings to get to zero before you adjust your rate.
That's right.
Just to clarify.
That's right.
And if it stayed at zero, we would be tying up our land.
Correct.
Not being able to build anything else.
Correct.
Okay.
The reason that, you know, I think that that scenario is highly unlikely is, and we'll get to this at the end, we were able to improve our solar rate from 7 and 1/2 to a lower rate. We're going to present that at the end, which helps with that scenario. And also, if you look at the age of all of the transmission and distribution lines and the way that Delmarva Power and Light covers the cost of reinvesting in all of the steel in the ground, even if natural gas goes to 50 cents a million BTU, right, $3 a million more in miles per hour, if it drops to 50 cents, your delivered electricity rate is still going to be higher than the solar rate.
Can I explain it a little differently?
Sure, please.
At this rate, this would be the same as DPL's rate permit, but your supply rate would be one penny versus 8 cents. I don't think DPL's ever going to be producing their transmission and distribution. It's the supply side that's fluctuating somehow. But in this scenario, it would be a purchase for supply of one penny versus 8 cents, 8 plus cents, which is the ESMEC number. We don't think that will ever happen, but we want to create a scenario that guarantees you that you'll never get negative against your utility rates over the life. Does that make sense? You understand what I said about the TND versus the supply?
Capisce?
Cool.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we're very hard to try and make the languages digestible and clear, and that's something that I'll continue working with Mr. Downs and Mr. George on.
And nobody else has provided this, and so I want to make sure that this is viewed to be somewhat proprietary. It's the first time I've seen it from SunEd. We're happy to have it. I hope it answers the questions. Any other questions that come from that?
Sorry to run a little late, but I'm a little dumbfounded about this. After I first heard this information about the solar system, I was really up on the high about it. And then I started thinking, just like anything else, I always like to find out my pluses and my negatives and try to weigh them, because every time we hear all the good stuff, it just like, just wind up all the negative stuff around. But, you know, I hear the part about saving energy, and my question came up was, I know we always had the roof with the bubble and the heat coming in from the sun. Seems like right now we're buying Mother Nature from you guys, just from the sources of the metal or whatever we're putting on the building. My question was, if we're dealing through DP.
DPL.
L. The question is, we're buying from them, but then we have to rely on you guys for the savings from two sources instead of one. You want me to step on?
No, we don't buy electricity from DP and L. We actually buy it from Washington Gas.
Okay, whoever, but we're still.
It's a negotiated kilowatt-hour rate. All DP and L provides is the distribution system or delivery of the service. So they're like two different organizations. Like, they sell us the water, and DP and L has the pipe to get it to us.
Well, same concept is, we're getting from two different sources, but we're still going to end up having to pay out two different ways. Is that correct?
You're actually going to be paying three ways, but the net payment for the three ways saves you significant money over what you're paying now.
I mean, these are just questions after all this has come up.
I understand.
And I'm saying to myself, would it be for our best interest to go with what we've been dealing with, with the, when the sun's beaming down, we're generating energy through the bubble of the, you know, I'm trying to use the word bubble, but you know, I'm talking about the solar gases, and most of the houses we're put with, I might be going against what I'm trying to think of right now, but I'm trying to go from what was put in place years ago through solar systems and. You've got a lot of illusion, but I'm kind of loving myself.
You know, I think there is on Standard Solar's website a very short video of four minutes from Rock Hall. And I think that might put in perspective, if it's possible, we can watch that. I don't know, Mayor, if you want to. But it shows what this is, and, I mean, it's four minutes long. You hear from the Mayor of Rock Hall what their savings are. I don't know if.
I think we, let's finish with the presentation, and then we'll watch the video.
This is more stored energy based on generating.
You don't have the.
Basically, we can access it online. I'm kind of lost on it, so.
It's all generating energy. There's no stored energy.
Yeah, there's no stored. I'm beyond it. I'm completely.
So just think of it as the solar is offsetting costs that are both supply and transmission and distribution on the other side.
One of the things that a lot of people don't understand, that when you buy a small commercial solar panel, for example, let's say you want to light up your garden, and you can put them around. With that, it absorbs energy from the sun, converts it, and then it charges up a little battery that's in there. Then at night, that battery power is what the light works. In this case, there is no battery. Actually, during the, when the sun is energizing these panels, so to speak, that generates so much electricity and puts it into the grid by which it is used. But when the sun goes away, it's gone. So then you're relying on electricity we buy from, in this case, Washington Gas.
So that's not the stored energy I'm talking about?
Well, that's the stored energy.
That's why I said that. You wouldn't appreciate the video.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll try to make more of that clear. You want to go back to the, these items?
Sure.
The second one was the net metering and billing issues. I think there was a call to Cecil County about that subject. We had our meeting last week with Tom Capra, and I talked to Perry Willis before that. And Tom was very satisfied with the whole explanation of the big picture, previous year, this year, and we gave him specific tools to monitor per account how to track the savings to make sure that they're attributing the savings correctly and they're getting what they deserve from Delmarva Power, which is part of the issue, too.
How many megawatts is the school's?
Well, it's 2.58 megawatts.
2.5?
Mm-hmm.
That's the biggest we can do, right?
Yeah. It was at the time. We're at 2.6 right now, but just slightly more. And you're at 2.2.
And the county school system is actually looking at base, too.
We just delivered our proposal today.
Very good.
For the new Votec High School and also site just below Leeds Elementary. That was 4.1 megawatts.
And Perry was pretty excited to show us the web portal that shows the production of the solar fuel time for the past week. It's sort of like a little weather channel, but you get to see all the power that's flowing into the grid.
That's going to be available to us.
Yeah.
I think we took a look at it. We had Mount Oggett Academy actually allowed me access to take a look at the way it was set up, and it's kind of neat how much the savings and calculating, just like a clock.
It's slick. And you can access it from anywhere.
Yeah, it's pretty slick.
When we went to meet with Tom last week, he had received the first month's bills, so we were able to track the production and usage of those, and it's directly in line with what we had predicted.
Very good.
So he now has to go through a process of making sure that he gets everything in line attributed properly.
Right.
But he's, he's ready to receive a phone call from anybody who would like to talk about.
Delmarva Power and Light is the one that actually accounts for the energy that flows into the grid from the solar array, and then that's used to offset the spend that you would have at the multiple different accounts. They do all that work on their end as part of their monthly billing cycle, but we provide tools as well to make sure that they're accurately accounting so that it ties to what we say the system produces and what you're charged the 7 and 1/2 cents for to ensure that you get the same volume of credits at the 11 and 1/2 cents.
You had asked us to provide references, which we did. I hope they've turned out to be okay. Trust they are. We asked about the cost of the spoil pile that's on the site, and I don't know if there's some work going on there right now. There seems to have been some changes or something.
That was a storage from our dredging.
Right. There's still some.
And you agreed to purchase all that spoils, right?
Right. That's right.
Put it back.
Very costly, pretty. No, we were happy to absorb it onsite and make sure that it was not an issue. And as part of that discussion, there's a significant need to make sure that our disturbed area calculation for the overall project is less than 5,000 square feet so that we don't have to go through special permitting processes, which we are. So that was our understanding of what the due diligence items were. Were there any others that we missed that we should make sure we talk about?
Why can't we use the power to heat swimming pools? That's an IRS regulation. When I saw that.
Yeah.
That's a new one.
That's a new one.
Use power to heat a swimming pool.
It's some crazy IRS. It's a luxury item.
Oh, okay. I didn't know the board was aware of that.
That's how it got interpreted. No, it shouldn't be a benefit for luxury items. We discussed that. Net metering credits. Let's see, do we need to go over this? This was from our original presentation.
Well, no, so this is all the diligence items broken out.
Oh, okay. Offsetable rates, supply and delivery. And so you understand the offsettable rate equates to saving 100% of the supply and approximately 70% of the Delmarva power charges. So you combine the full amount of the ESMEC offset plus a portion of the transmission and delivery, and that's where you get the net offsettable rate. And it's, of course, fixed as part of the contract for the life of the 20 years. And the difference between two yield savings, you want to explain that, Mike?
Well, just, the opening slide was the 11 and 1/2 cent delivered rate. That will change over time, but it's the difference between that and the price for the solar where the savings are generated from.
Starts out at 4 cents.
Right. For $120,000.
Right. And we do all the work to set it up with DPL, and then we definitely have excellent tools for tracking the savings, which we just talked about.
Are you ready to go with DP and L?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got an approval. We've gotten full approval for it.
Okay.
The $122,000 a year in savings.
For sure.
That's going to decrease by somewhere between 5 and 8% per year because of the deterioration of the panel itself. Is that right?
We forecast the degradation of the system at large at about 0.5 percentage points per year. So.
So hardly.
Yeah. If it degraded that much, it should be a pile of dust by the end of the 20-year period, and at the end of the 20-year period, it'll probably produce about 80% that it did in year one. We have over 1,500 systems online of this size, Sun Edison does. We're the nation's largest owner of solar projects like this, and the fleet performance is at about 103% of the forecasted.
So this isn't a prototype?
The prototype is the, the prototype is a zero-risk PPA because you drive a hard bargain.
Yeah, we'll write an article about this one. References provided?
And just on that point, I was looking at something earlier, I believe. So this is Standard Solar and Sun Edison together, at least on some of these. SunEd, I believe, has 40 different systems done in the state. I've got the number on my phone. You guys probably have a similar number. In a finance solution where you guys put no money up, you don't put any money up for the interconnect or the cost of the modules or whatever, there's a really nice partnership between Standard Solar, that wants to develop the projects and build them, and Sun Edison, that wants to be the long-term owner of the system. That's really our business model. There's a lot of incentives from the federal government and from the state government that are a little obscure for you guys who may be interested in a project to take advantage of. But that's what we do, is we package them all together and then deliver the savings. Without the incentives, the solar is actually more expensive than conventional supply and delivery. It'd probably be 15 or 16 cents, but the federal government and the state government have made policy goals and then provided the opportunity for savings for you guys to say, yep, this is worth doing, worth investing our land and our time for the opportunity for savings, the educational benefits, the positive community aspects of it, et cetera.
Is that a one-time incentive, or is it a perpetual thing, or what?
From the federal government, it's one time, and then from.
And that's just offset your capital investment?
It does.
Okay.
It's a 30% offset to the capital investment.
And state?
The state, there's one that's, that's only in the first year, and then there's one that continues on for four, five years. It's really, really obtuse and illogical, the way the incentives flow to the project, so we try and make it as simple as possible, but that's what we spend a lot of time on.
And the Maryland one expires this year.
That's correct. If the project's not online by the end of the year, I think that's a point we're going to touch on. The rate that we can offer is impactful, but we'll get to that.
So this was the response to the site development and design issues. Interconnection approval from DPL's spoil piles will be managed. We've done the disturbed area calculations. We have the basic design of the systems have been approved by DPL. We would just have to go into detailed design. And then it's really a matter of moving forward to finalizing the contracts.
Are you, when do you do geotechnical work? Are you going to do that?
We would do it immediately.
Okay.
We would kind, you know, assuming we would move forward at some time in the near future, we would immediately get soil tests done.
Okay.
Or we'd use some that you've done in recent panels on that site.
Over that whole site, I think KCI did some.
I think you gave us some. I think you gave us some already.
Yeah.
All right. Timeline. This doesn't show up very clearly, Mike.
You want to start with the corollary of Cecil Board of Ed timeline?
Well, how far back should I go on that one?
Just from board approval, contract execution, and project online.
So basically, this timeframe for the initial four months, in the case of Cecil County Board of Ed, was about nine months in timeframe. And it was partly because, you may remember, there were some land trading issues going on that put in the Board of Ed about using certain properties for other things. Perry had to delay that. But once we got that approved, PPA was then signed in May, was it? Early May?
May 13.
May 13. And then we delivered, we actually turned on and delivered the system in the first third week of January. Yes. So May to January. But because of these incentives that we're talking about specifically. that we're talking about specifically, the Maryland incentive, we need to turn it on by the end of the year in order to get that incentive completed. So that's why we're trying to set the contract to work time for March with negotiations for PPA as soon as possible after that, because we have a timeframe that potentially gets used up very quickly.
That's amazing that the system construction period of it, the most amazing part of all this is you can see the field, and then three weeks later, you'll drive by, and it'll look like a fully constructed system. The easiest, the easiest part of this is actually the field work. It's amazing how proficient Standard Solar is through our making them, but it's all of the infrastructure work that goes on the front end and the contracting and the approvals. It takes a really lengthy amount of time.
So we're constantly improving the systems, the equipment, the interconnection, the wiring, everything that goes into the design engineering. So these are custom-designed systems. They may look like somebody else's, but they were specifically done, and that takes several months to do. Then, of course, in our case, for Cecil County, there was a procurement process with the county and permitting process that was expected to take a longer period of time, but it actually ended up being relatively short, but we couldn't start until August. So it was done within a six-week timeframe, not the full time. And then the construction, system construction was about two and a half months, three months.
Do the solar powers people actually put the underground lines into Delmarva systems?
Well, we actually deliver to a box that's provided by DPL. DPL makes the interconnect.
Okay.
So, but we, you know, we have a full understanding of who's going to do what. We try to do as much as possible because it's less expensive by about a third from what DPL charges for the same work.
Yeah, there is.
As you can imagine, that's usually agreed to ahead of time, and that's part of the costs that we are absorbing into our project.
And there's safety disconnects at certain points in the system driven by electrical code and DPL's requirements?
You may not know, but at Cecil County, their high voltage lines were actually on the other side of Northeast Road, and we had to get DPL to bring new lines across this state highway, which had to be done on a Sunday morning, and there were a whole series of issues that caused some logistical problems. We don't have any of that here.
No, you're right there.
Yeah, on this one, yeah. In fact, the DPL representatives asked us why we found such an easy site. They'd like it to be a little bit more complicated. It's a little bit more expensive. Anything else you want to say on that?
Yeah.
So Louis, as you say, this is not our first time doing this thing.
Yeah, that's why I went down. Steve and I went down to, what's his name? Babe View and Saw it. We're very impressed how it was done. And then he broke one panel.
Yeah, we don't know who did. We're trying to find that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the Kent County project, there was one panel broken, and it was from a baseball hit from the Parks and Rec site next door. It was a big foul ball. So here are those timeline drivers. The Maryland PTC expires December 31st, and then if we don't meet that, the PPA rate would rise by half a penny. And we believe that we have to get the contract executed by the end of March to hold the savings. And then, of course, the benefits, engagement from design, more savings sooner. And we've talked a lot about the, you know, bullying up the bottom side of this, but, and it's hard to talk about what actually positive things might happen, but we think that there's just as much chance for the savings to be going up as they might to go down. And we don't have, of course, any forward data to say that. But the expectations of what might be changing in the next five years politically and in the course of energy production, we think can be just as positive as it could be considered to be negative.
Extreme weather events drive the cost for reinvestment in all the infrastructure. I think that's a theme especially up and down the eastern seaboard that will become more. You look at Hurricane Sandy, I believe it was $80 billion of reinvestment from that, and that has to be reabsorbed by the rate payers through their deliberate electricity rates.
One thing I'd like to get clarified, you had September through December, I think, for construction. How long does it actually take you to do the construction? I know the timeframe, but there's a delay at the end once it's, it's going online.
It's about three months total, Louis.
Okay, I just worry about at the end there, you have to meet that December 31st.
The first action on the site would be to put the fence up, which allows then for there to be a secure space to have modules and equipment to start being delivered. And that usually takes about a month of receiving material before the work actually starts in construction. And then what I think Mike was saying that happened so quickly is that the posts go in, the racking goes up, and the modules can go on in a matter of three or four weeks. And it's just amazing how suddenly it looks like it wasn't anything and suddenly it's all done.
The time lapse videos of those are really cool. Yeah, I think your question is, though, at the end of the build process, there's usually about a two-week testing period.
Yeah, there's a gap there.
That you work with the utility company and you work with the independent engineer to ensure that the system is built to design specs. And then there's test energy supply before it's energized. And that's a highly core bracket process that we're very familiar with.
Why don't you talk a little bit about the third-party engineering and all the quality control stuff?
There are more people looking after the quality of this than you ever think. And what's nice about this model is if the solar system doesn't produce, you guys aren't paying for the fact that it's not producing. Our incentives are fully aligned to drive the production of it. So it's actually designed to a 30-year useful life, even though it's a 20-year contract. And we, as the long-term system owner, only generate the revenue to repay the upfront cost of it when the system's producing. So we really care that it's built to high-quality standards and that all the safety precautions are taken. Because as much as you wouldn't like to have a stranded or idle project, we've got four, five billion dollars that we really wouldn't like, like that.
Well, every month that is delayed is $10,000 savings to the town.
Yes, that's a good way to think about it.
So I want to say that we've got to get this up as quickly as we can. I'm just seeing $10,000 right now each month, and if it's not done by December, we've lost, we're going to lose $60,000 savings this year.
Well, that's a perfect segue, Rob, because we just upped your monthly savings to 13,000. We have a new PPA rate for you to consider today. There had been a question about best offers in the past, which are never forgotten. Sorry about that.
That's quite okay.
So we're glad to say that as we've gone through the process of sorting out all the what-ifs, we've been able to refine the PPA rate to a proposed 7.2 cents, which then is a net 4.3 cent difference times the production of the system equals 131,000 instead of 122.
And that's the work with Delmarva Power and Light going back on the interconnection. It's continued work on the design side. And, you know, we scrub it. We work really hard. I'm very happy to come in with updated savings to you guys.
DJ that question saved us $9,000. Thank you.
Can I ask it again?
Well, you can ask another question. We talked about escalator. If you wanted to have a 1% escalator, Mike could give you a different rate with a 1% escalator, and then it creates an opportunity for you too to have more of a theoretical cushion about the future of what might happen. The town of Pokemoke City decided to do a 1%, Perry decided to do a 2%. But in the case of Pokemoke City, their rate went up like 0.4, 0.5, or something like that.
I think it's four or five tenths of a penny for a 1% escalator change. So if we went from seven, if you wanted to do seven-two at 2% down to a 1% escalator, it'd be like seven-six or seven-seven with a 1% escalator. And it's all looked at on a present value basis. There's minimum return thresholds that if they're not met, we can't build a project.
The, as far as, this is a true turnkey, I haven't seen the final one yet, the final contract, but this is a true turnkey to the town with zero cost. That there's vandalism to the product, to the fence, cutting the grass, product failure, act of God.
Everything.
Everything falls on you.
Yeah, there's, yeah, everything. So there's two things. There's the commitment to buy the power at a predetermined rate.
Right.
It's defined in the special conditions, and then there's the site license, which allows us to have our personal property on your real property. And that's it. And then at the end of the 20-year term of the agreement, you have three different options. Option one is we remove the system and all the infrastructure around it and return it to the condition at no cost to the town. Sort of the baseline assumption. Option two is you say, you know, this has worked really well. I would like to continue getting the benefit of the solar. Let's enter it to an extension. There's the opportunity to extend the term. Or option three would say, let's give ourselves a go at owning the system, and what would the price be for us to buy the system and have it be an asset that we own? If you guys own other municipal utilities and like that, if that may be of some interest to you. The likely scenario would be option two, I would think, because by that time, power's going to be 20 cents a kilowatt hour. The system's going to be a house that you paid off the full mortgage, but you got 10 more years of house left. You'd say this is a pretty good deal.
What's the upgrade on option two as far as the panels we set this up? It's all been 20 years from now. Technology, do we get the upgrade, the upgrade cost for the upgrade?
So I like it, like to say, it's like you got a teenager and you got your old pickup truck that you had that you bought 20 years ago, right? And the question is, is do I scrap the truck or do I put the maintenance dollars in for the brake pads and this, that, and the other? We don't know yet, year 20, what the upgrade cost is going to be and the cost to maintain it. But we are really confident in that 20-year term that we can offer this price to repay the upfront capital investment. The location and the interconnection into the power lines is going to be an asset for the town. It's likely that the inverters in some of the panels will be repowered with that day's best technology, but it's the site that's unobstructed and the fact that you have access to the power lines that can flow the benefits to all the other town accounts is an asset for the town for many, many years to come. But the point is, those options are written into the PPA, so you can choose whatever you want, or whoever will be here can choose whatever they want at that particular time.
Where is that agreement?
20 years from now.
I hope I can remember.
Oh, fucking wheelchair, you know. Is that what you're going to be doing? All right.
Yeah, so our attempt here was to address some of the open questions. I'm sure there's more questions that have come up as we walk through this, but this is, hopefully you get the sense this is really our best attempt to bring savings and clean energy to the community. And when you connect with Perry or Russ Blade to Pokemoke City or others, we've followed through on our commitments, and we really work hard to make sure that you guys are happy through the process.
At the end of the slides?
Yeah.
John, is there any questions that you had that would hold this up from coming to a vote Wednesday, next Wednesday?
I think they've addressed the issues that we bring this.
Lou, how do you feel about this?
I'm a hundred percent. I love the idea of having solar power and then developing. I hate, I hate the thought that Cecil County has all the school. He just said punch those big campus. We should set the example.
Yeah, they're going to see ours. We're helping.
Well, definitely will be. And, you know, the value of the aprich, when that was acquired in, I think, 99 or 2000, I think we've got our money's worth out by being able to expand that wastewater treatment like the plant like we did. And now the thought that we have to give is whether or not, I know there was some discussion about moving a rec center out to that area or using it for others. I feel comfortable that at some point we'll tackle that issue if we make this solar panel farm. But when you weigh this out at the possibility of the savings to the town residents and the risk of the zero risk of tying up our land for 20 years, I think it's well worth the opportunity and the risk for our town. So hopefully everyone will consider that, that's 20 cents. And I know how I'm going to vote next Wednesday, so. Does anyone have any other question about the presentation? Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attention and time.
Thank you. Do we want to see the video, Earl? You want to see it? Can we pop it on air?
I'm sure we can. Is this, is this on the Standard Solar website?
It's on Standard Solar website, yeah.
Press escape, Rob. If you press escape, that's how you exit out of this.
Yeah, we aren't hurt to the...
They have enough land to expand the water plant if they quit that.
I want to help you.
It sounds like you said it already.
I want to help you.
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 Do you think that's working?
I think it's working.
Yeah.
If you have any emails, you can get them.
That was a little...
It's going to be a chance.
Okay, you go through this. Do you have room to expand the wastewater plant or are you going to expand the plant?
The inner ring, the inner ring of the wastewater treatment plant is yes. We still can go from the 3.2 to 5 million gallons.
Yeah, we add another ring to the reactor, another clarifier.
Answer is yes.
The footprint's all there.
We designed that and I need to take a ride to the car.
Yeah, it is, actually.
Did it, didn't it?
So, you saw him fall down.
I'll try to figure out how to get you out.
How did you know if I needed a crane or?
That was a deep hole you were doing.
Hey, is this stuff stored?
Thanks, brother.
Mr. Blonsky, thank you for doing such good research.
I hope you can find it.
It ain't going to work.
No, I'm afraid it's not going to. I get Mike in here.
Listen, I never look at it, but you're going to look at it.
Yeah, just go on the front page and I go to Rock Hall and it's a four-minute video and it shows you exactly what's going to happen.
Well, we'll all make sure we take a look at it.
You had a mayor and a town administrator.
We're okay.
We'll look at it. We'll look at it later.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys, for that.
Close out of this. Go ahead.
The next item on the agenda, I think we have some signage information.
Todd's here. Todd, come up and join us.
What are you doing?
I'm not going to make...
I don't know. You win this project story. He just snuck inside. But we had a, we had a little surprise for Earl. We just wanted to show you this. You weren't on time. But we had a little birthday cake for Earl. We didn't have any.
I appreciate it.
We didn't have birthday?
I really went along with y'all. I haven't even do the cake.
If you guys sing "Happy Birthday".
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
I wanted to, I wanted to put that cake out there to, so we can keep things moving. So we can all have a slice of that cake.
I've never had so many men spin some pictures. I don't know how to tell my wife, but this one is.
Just don't tell her.
All right. Have a good time with me, Lockman.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, what we got here, Todd?
I'm pretty giving update on the wayfinding sign project, which, like I said, Kim, many years, we're probably getting close to the, the baseline. Uh, do you wanna start on the, kind of the old history?
Yeah, back in 2010, we counted a five years of assistance. Architect on call, and it was a, sort of a grant where you could get some free architectural assistance for streetscaping and, and assorted things. And the one thing that we had looked at with, uh, developing a wayfinding sign system to help folks enter into the town and, and get where they were going a little more easily. And back in the day, the, the gentleman from, um, David Gleason Associates Architects had come up with a, a sketch, sort of showing, you know, the large signs that would be out on 40 and then signs that were a little bit smaller that would be closer in downtown and then a little tiny sign that would be ditched to your destination ultimately. Um, so, we were working on this for a long time. And when we finally, um, came up with a sign that, that we were happy with, uh, the state had informed us that they had a new, um, sign program called tourist area corridor signage. And they're very specific about the tourist area corridor signage, and it has to be signage that, um, you can place, I guess, within state highways that will direct you to touristy areas that have certain criteria associated, and they have to be open a certain amount of time and, and that sort of thing. And so this isn't what we were looking for. We didn't have a tourist area that would be directing to, we were directing to the hospital and police station. And the only other sign that fit into their criteria was gateway signs, which is welcome to Elton. Well, we wanted to do this, which is sort of a hybrid of the tourist area corridor signage, and we wanted to do a wayfinding signs, which they, um, were okay with except for the fact that we wanted to put our hand seal on them so that people knew they were in Elton and that we were Elton. And, um, so that created a little bit of an issue with approvals. Um, but I think we're, we're making progress, it's five years, but we're making progress. And, um, once, if I can kind of summarize, once we came, we wanted to start with the large signs out on 40, 279, 213 to get people going, you know, where they need to go, get to where they need to go. And we've worked through the state highway issues with those large signs, but then when we thought we were making progress, they said, well, now you need to have the smaller signs also now.
Trailblazing.
The trailblazing signs now. And so, um, on the gateway, the, the larger signs, you have to have the trailblazing signs. So we had to go back and design and identify the, the signs we already have that act as trailblazing signs that are existing in town and then work with them to say, well, you know, what more do we need to do so we can make, get, you know, you have to report a motion on this. So Todd and John Burkowski have been working. John Bridenhouse is at KCI with their transportation engineering.
Yeah, and as Jean mentioned, there's, there's the four primary wayfinding signs, uh, two on Route 40, one at Delaware Avenue, and another one over at Hurst Street, and then over on 279 at 213 and 268. The layout of the sign, uh, it's deviated significantly from when the original grant was done. The original grant had these kind of more decorative, uh, looking signs. Uh, and going through the process with the state, it's basically come back to a.
It looked like this, really nice, but the state doesn't.
A standard.
They won't allow this.
Yeah, so basically it comes back to more of a standard, uh, road sign. Right now, we've got shown web, it's actually gonna be a green background like you see on a traditional highway sign. The only real, uh, unique feature that we're willing to do on the guidelines is the town logo at the top. Other than that, basically their guidelines are relatively strict in terms of making sure that it follows the traditional signing procedures for the state.
The number of destinations, the font size, the colors, they had a restricted amount, type of colors, you can, number of colors you can choose from. So, yeah, it was.
And one of the difficulties that we also encountered was that in the multiple documents that you referred to, the tax program is the gateway sign program and have these other different, and each of them kind of has information that conflicts with each other. So maybe, so the one sign program says that you can do one thing, and then, and when we tried to propose that, it's like, oh, well, now this sign, or this one or here says we can. So that's where it came back to essentially a very simplistic sign with the town logo at the top. So we got past that point. We, we then went through and did our surveys, identified right of way, identified locations where these signs can be located within state right of way. Uh, we submitted plans, uh, then as part of the handle that we do, uh, is half scale of the official plans that might enter the state for the placement of the signs, where they're gonna be, uh, the size of the signs, details of the signs. Um, we went through that for, as Jean said, the, the four primary locations, uh, got pretty much okay on that, and then they're like, well, what about the trailblazing signs? And we're like, well, that's gonna be step two down the road. And they said to us, well, no, we can't have wayfinding signs if the person turns off the main road and they don't know where to go to at that point. So we negotiated with them and basically said, well, there is a significant amount of signage that exists in town today. Uh, can we show you what the town has, um, discuss it with you and supplement, uh, where there's a real need with some, some temporary signage to get us past this first step? And then the town commit to doing these full trailblazing signs, uh, at some point in the future. Uh, and they, they've agreed to do that and, and, uh, again, one of the handles I have for you here, uh, I represent in large scale, uh, and it's just interim conditions. And like I said, we have the four primary signs. Uh, most of them point to the downtown, hospital, optimistic ability, uh, or some of them point to the district courts. Um, the two additional signs that we're gonna be required to do immediately when we install the four primary signs is one to resell a hospital sign at intersection of North and Poughkeepsie will do this, uh, which is frustrating because that was one that was taken down by the state when they took down the lights. So we're putting it back up. Again, that one's not a big deal. We can even do that one in-house. I think Mark over Pub Works can create that sign and we can put that up ourselves. Uh, the second one is they, they say that, uh, over off of Delaware Avenue, there's not a clear direction to get to the district courts. So we are gonna be creating a sign that's closer to what's gonna be the, the final trailblazing signs that'll go at that location. Uh, other than that, that's all that's gonna be necessary to get us past this first step. Ultimately, it's this sign, uh, set right here. In addition to the four primary signs, we will have to do a total of eight trailblazing signs. Um, and part of what they're looking for is, um, the additional direction to your ultimate destination, but they also want uniformity in how the signs look. So when someone sees a, a wayfinding sign out on Route 40 for the hospital, they know to look for that same type of sign all the way to their destination. So that's what the, that's what all these trailblazing signs is ultimately gonna do. It's gonna give them a uniform look of the sign and get them from the main highway out on 40 or, or 279 all the way to the ultimate destination. Um, where we stand on the project right now is we've gotten all this okayed by the state. Um, the four primary trailblazing signs, the plans for designing that is complete and signed off on essentially as best as the highway will.
Yes.
Um, we're now at the point where we have to enter into a MOU with the state that dictates the timing of the installation of these signs, uh, who's responsible for maintaining them, who's responsible for installing them. Um, so that's one of the things I've been, as well, is a draft copy of the, the MOU with the state. So I guess, has anyone had a chance to review this from the disco to everyone before we meet?
It's basically a simple agreement. They'll give us permission to be in the right of way and we, we pay for everything and take care of everything. And we carry them as additionally insured under our, our, our policy also. Um, but basically, there's some news in here, but, you know, we're paying for everything.
Yeah. And I have a problem with that because we're paying for their design.
Yeah, we're designing.
But, but you're only allowed to do so much. Like, I'm, I'm gonna go back because I was mistaken. Jean and I walked the town, I think it was the tax signs. Is that where tourism, when we were all on.
Tourism.
And then that stopped and we weren't allowed to do this and that and the other thing. But I thought the welcome to Elton six signs were not part of this.
These are directional, and they're not welcome to Elton, they're directional signs. These are.
Okay, so they're not gonna replace the big ones that are out there?
They're not welcome to Elton.
Okay.
They're, they're wayfinding signs.
Oh, so that's the wayfinding.
Yeah.
Okay, but we still can't put shopping or arts and entertainment district and we can't do any of that?
When, when we discussed with them, with destinations that most people would be looking for, we need the downtown to probably encompass a lot of the shopping and that sort of thing. But they were, uh, they restricted us to, I think, no more than three destinations per sign.
Okay.
And I think I sent a list out to the board saying, you know, of all the, I gave you a list of destinations, which do you prefer to see on the signs? And we kind of modified some of them, like this one says downtown, but this one, um, let's see downtown.
The musical building.
Yeah, one is musical building, that's district court, that's the musical building because it's closer to the courthouse. So.
I think the, the simplicity of the signs and the design, the fonts, the colors and everything, uh, basically are designed around, uh, uh, what a motorist can actually absorb and appear to bond. John's actually an engineer, so he can tell you the real stuff. But, you know, when you go by a little bit of sign, a human being has a certain level of comprehension and can get so much information. So you could have an elaborate sign and nobody knows what it is. But, but if you see three words, I mean, three, uh, three or four destinations, downtown, ports and hospital, you can pretty much get that. I think that's the whole basis for their, is that right, John?
Yeah, a lot of this kind of got built out of the, the manually-informed traffic device, MUTCD, which is like the thorough highway sign, pavement markings and traffic control device, Bible. And Maryland has their own supplemental version of that. And then the, as the Maryland's state highways, community wayfinding guidelines were kind of built out of what the MUTCD would allow. And that kind of took the town away from the more aesthetic type sign to the more, what I call a boring standardized sign with the certain colors, certain uniform colors, uh, fonts and, and style, so.
And they developed that while we were trying to get this done. So they kind of held us off until they had that adopted and said we had to follow the regulations they had. So.
One other thing to consider as part of this, um, the state is basically telling us that if we go with these signs, that we would not be permitted to do tax signs in the future. Um, not sure why or how they can actually enforce that, uh, but in our discussions with them to try and get through the whole process.
That's your tourist sign, right?
Tourist area corridor signage, which is for tourist attraction.
Yeah, like you could have, like, we were originally thought to put Elton landing online and coming in and, I mean, the, um, historical society, anything, you know, that tourists are looking for. And, uh, and then they, that, was that a brown background on the sign or something?
Might have been a different.
Yeah, it was a different color.
Let me ask this question, Lou. Could we put those destinations on our own sign, like underneath the farmer's market, for example? We got the farmer's market sign.
We're not, we don't, I don't, we don't, we're not subject to SHA control on our own streets.
Why don't we look at that on that farmer's market sign? Cause it needs to be redone. Maybe we have our, our, we've got a lot of, uh, uh, sign space there that we could actually put, uh, uh, arts and entertainment this way, uh, uh, maybe, maybe, I wouldn't say the location of businesses, but what we're all about on that street.
One thing you have to consider, or John will probably jump in on this, is that the town, the town signs, uh, should be, the motors should follow a standard similar to the state.
Yes.
If you, if you create people with stop to look, you know, you never can tell what that will happen. So the manner for uniform traffic control devices as these reference, we, we follow that thing. That's why our stop signs and yield signs and all the other signs are bigger uniform. So I think that if you deviated too much from a, a sign that pointed out location, you probably have to do it, you may be able to do it slightly different, but it should be.
I'd say the same font. I'd say we do, yeah, I would agree with that.
So it's not too much to stop read, you know?
I think we do the same sort of style font that they're doing, but we could put our attractions on.
Yeah, and there's a lot of those signs that are in those spots that have, like, still says, um, government building or something. I think Jean put one right out of the ground. The one day, I heard in front of my, she's like, this is all.
Well, the, the other signage that we have that, that is welcome to Elton signs that we have on.
Yes.
Parcels of land that, uh, they were just kind of put up.
Yeah.
Years ago.
Years ago.
Can they, jokers, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can they be, can we repaint those and put like a, uh, uh?
I don't think we can, can we?
Can we or not?
They're, it's.
We.
They want to pull them up and they tell them.
Not in the state highway right of way, but exposed to the state highway. I think they exercise some jurisdiction there. In other words, you can't, can't take like Route 40 or I-95, not 95, but Route 40, for example, and go beyond it right of way and put a sign up.
When it looks like crap, we either have to pull them up or we have to redo them.
The sign that's there, we painted twice and we've replaced the, the vinyl in them twice. And I know that because the lions did it.
He can run at night and do that.
No, they'd sneak around at night. I mean, I didn't, it was just.
Well, that's my point. We either, we either have to redo them with the new vinyl on to them or we have to pull them up because it, it does give us a good look.
$220 a sign.
Have you seen them?
Yeah, I've seen them. Yeah, you're right.
Because they're already there. So we just.
We'll have to find out what we can do.
So what do we, what do we need to do now, Todd?
I guess if the town was to move forward with this, we would need to send a document back, a draft of the MOU back to state for their review.
Yeah, the, the initial, uh, language was a template brought to us by SHA that's kind of their standardized format for their MOUs. And it was, uh, from a sample signing project in another part of Maryland. And, uh, I guess we've shared it with the town to make sure that everyone is on the town's end is comfortable with it. And then we would send it back to the state to see if they have any, any comment or adjustment to, uh, how we've tailored the MOU. And hopefully that would be the end of it. They would sign off. And then we'd be allowed to proceed with the, uh, the four main signs plus the two, uh, interim, uh, trailblazing signs as the initial installation. And then the follow-up would be, as Todd mentioned, under the, the ultimate plan would be the additional trailblazing signs, which would match consistent, the consistent style of the signs out on Route 40 and 279. And those would be done at a timeframe that is agreed to between SHA and the town. And the suggested timeframe, I guess, is either six months to a year. I can't recall exactly what we put into the document. So I think those, those specifics would probably be, you know, most important to, to get buy-in from the town before we send it back to SHA to make sure everyone's comfortable with that.
How do you feel, Jean?
I had a couple of questions. Has state highway already approved the rest of the, um, trailblazing signs?
We have not prepared detailed plans for those, other than the exhibits that Todd's presenting today to everyone. What, at, at, at some point, we will need to take a similar approach to plan preparation for those signs, even though they're smaller signs, to show right of way and make sure that they're not in conflict with any other existing signing or, or traffic control to make sure SHA's okay with the sign's style and the size of the signs and things like that, so.
So they reviewed it in terms of just general.
Just the original.
But they haven't gotten.
This says six wayfinding signs, is that right?
We actually, we need to tweak that, because there's six initial signs, it should say four wayfinding and two temporary trailblazing. We'll add something more correct on there.
On the trailblazing signs, they won't allow us to put the seal on the trailblazing signs?
Uh, I think they might, but this, again, based on the scale, the size of those signs, they will come down, so the size of the, the seal would probably shrink with it. The larger signs that are out on Route 40 and, uh, 279, I believe, have a, a maxed-out size for the seal that they allow. So I think, you know, the ratio, the, that's percentage would come down to like maybe an eight-inch size seal or a 12-inch size seal as opposed to the 16 I think that we're proposing on the, the larger signs.
I just thought it would be more consistent between the larger.
I believe they'll allow for that. The color scheme and then they have the destinations on those smaller signs would just need to be the same as what's out on the main roads.
What's the projected cost?
We've done a cost for installation for the four major signs. And that's about $35,000, $37,000 for the four. That's basically taking into account the concrete.
$1,000, wow. There's three zeros behind that $37.
Yeah, the concrete associated with the supports, the steel beams associated with the supports for the signs. The four major signs are large enough that they need to be extruded aluminum, not sheet aluminum. The only component of the sign that sheet aluminum is the seal itself, which I guess is banded to the extruded part and raised. So that portion of it is not actually extruded. We have a cost in that for maintenance of traffic, which may or may not be necessary, but we put it in there to be conservative. The contractor may be able to work off the shoulder or outside of the roadside and may not need much of a maintenance of traffic set up for any of these sites. Although we do propose one site along 40 in the median. So it's possible that for them to set their trucks up to install the sign, they may need to have a temporary lane closure.
I had trouble listening after $37,000. Did you say four signs at 37?
Total, the total to cover all four signs, yes.
And how many signs are we potentially putting up to include the?
Oh, there's four.
Four wayfinding and two, did you say temporary trailblazing?
Two temporary, and other two temporary. One is just a hospital sign, which I think public works can handle themselves. I don't think we need it.
The smaller signs, while I'm, of course, they don't have a cost to quote for you for the trailblazing type signs, those would, because of the size of them, would most likely be sheet aluminum. And those would most likely go on tubular steel. The perforated type posts in the sidewalks or back behind the sidewalk would be a much smaller, much smaller cost. The cost is, the items that are driving the cost of these larger signs is the concrete to pour the foundations for the steel high beams to support the signs and the actual size of the extruded panels.
What's the dimensions of the signs?
They range, they're all about nine feet wide by seven foot tall. The smallest signs is seven by seven.
John said he'd do it for him.
One weekend at night.
Wow.
I bought a lot of GTS for people.
Jean, is there any community block grants or legacy grants or anything?
Not that I know of from the signage.
I didn't see them.
I have, it wasn't made all that directly.
It wasn't.
I'm not sure if it was any.
I think it's where they have them.
It did have it though.
Year mark for my budget. I have money in my letter, but to see what else is in there.
These are all state highways.
But it would be nice to get the wayfinding signs done. Especially the small ones we can do ourselves.
But you're saying, okay, so we're saying we have to do the rest, but we can do the rest ourselves.
No, probably not going to happen this year. We'll have to add that to the question.
I would think that these small signs would be within the KPIs of our public works.
Yeah.
Any other questions on signage? Hearing that, let's have a piece of cake as we're eating your dinner. You got something else?
What about the MOU?
Well, I guess, I guess there's a few items we want to talk about. I guess one is, there's the initial date. We want to commit to having the overall signs in, or the initial signs in. Right now, we have listed July 1 of this year. So is that, are we looking to try and get something done immediately? Or do we want to put that initial date further back?
How long will it take to make the signs?
John, do you have an idea on the timing of actual selection?
Uh, I mean, the sign contractors, the lines up by this town, rather than the four signs.
Yeah, I think the actual selection process will probably take a longer period of time here. I think when we first drafted this, it was back in November of last year. So we may need to push some of these dates back anyway just because when we put the dates initially, it was assuming that we were going to start it probably soon from that point forward.
A sign of this nature, is it installed by SHA personnel or do they, they sell contractors?
No, it would be, the town will be doing the selection. The town wants to put out a bid for contractors to do the work.
No, that's what I'm saying. The reason I ask you that is that if the state uses a contractor to do this type of work, that's who we would pursue.
Correct.
A contractor that's working with the state highway.
Correct.
Okay, because we use that, if we had to do an intersection or a traffic signal or anything, we'd always go to the state highway contractor.
Right.
You know, because they're, you know, what they're doing.
The second thing would be after that first date that we commit to on the four wayfinding signs and the two temporary signs is how long before we need, or before we want to commit to doing the secondary signs? And as John was saying, I think the state was pushing for like six months, but was saying that we could potentially push it back to a year. Is the town comfortable in following up with the secondary signs within a year? That's the second question that I guess we want to have asked or thought about. And was there any others?
I think those, the dates are the major item of the, again.
It takes that much time.
Correct. The issue there would be going through and just getting the blessing of the state to put them.
Yeah, the location.
Location. Check out the streets, because many of these are going to actually be in town streets. So those are no big deals. We can do, we can take care of that without even going through the permitting from the state. There are several that fall on state right of ways. Sorry, North Street, is there one? There's, yeah.
We're putting these signs, there's four, the four initial wayfinding signs are being placed in a location that there currently is not a sign.
Right.
And that's why there has to be concrete poured and steel in.
The next ones.
But the next ones would be hopefully just replacing signs to a degree, or we don't know.
So to a certain extent, in many of the existing locations, you've got kind of, you've got mismatched signs and posts. So we're going to be taking a lot of those down, consolidating them, or taking something down, consolidating them.
Yeah, as part of the smaller trailblazing type signs, there may be some relocations or removals of existing sign that's out there to kind of clean up or consolidate. That's not reflected in detail on the exhibits, but, you know, a sign that's at the Maryland 7 and Main Street intersection, you know, there may be some sign that would not fall through the trailblazers that gets cleaned up as well.
Well, I certainly think that, you know, this is a necessary evil that we have to, when I say necessary, that's the wrong words are used. It's a very important, it's a very important to be able to have the directional signs showing people how to get into our town.
Certainly is.
And the cost is a little alarming, but, you know, that's just a budgeted cost and we might be able to.
I tried to put that cost out there as a more conservative estimate for everyone. I would hope and think that the cost would come down, but I wouldn't chance to say that it would come down to the point where it would be a total of $10,000 to $15,000. $30,000 maybe is a more realistic, but I don't, I don't perceive it being much less than that.
Very good. All right, we'll give it some thought. Thank you. Anything else, Lou?
When does this need to be adopted? When does the county get approval of this?
Basically, the state's waiting for us to. So we would, our first step would be to send a draft to the state with their review. And then they, then they would come back to us. They agree with what the language is. We have not included any sort of activity in the firm. So we're not doing it until next week.
No, they have that guy, that's all.